[S01]...
Okay.
Call the February 1st, 2007, meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Molitor?
Present.
Commissioner Adukas?
Here.
Commissioner Bartels?
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the annual meeting to elect the Chair and Vice Chair and to set the schedule of hearings for the year 2007, and I turn it over to the Planning Director.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Adukas. Item number four on the agenda, as you said, is to conduct the nominations and elections of the Chair and the Vice Chair, so I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the Chair.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Westner as Chair of the Commission.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Commissioner Westner, so I would like to open the floor for nominations for the Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Bill Bartels for Vice Chair.
I'll second that motion.
Second, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So I would now turn the meeting and the gavel back over to the new Chairman, who is not here today, so congratulations to Chairman Westner and Vice Chair Bartels. Mr. Bartels.
Okay. Thanks. I'd like to make two comments about our immediate past Chair, Commissioner Adukas. First of all, to push the limit and the bar and also bring community, as always, to this Commission, and that the dialogue that we had, if this Commission was run by the politics of the county, it would be a lot less successful as a decision-making body, and I think you embody all of that, and I certainly as one appreciate that skill.
Thank you.
I would like to make a comment too, and Commissioner Adukas is extremely easy to work with. I feel comfortable in talking to her about any issues or bringing anything up at these meetings, and being heard and being respected for my opinion. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion for setting the time and place of these meetings.
I move that we continue to meet at 8:30 a.m. on Thursdays, based upon the agendas or the items that need to be addressed, and that we continue to meet in the Board of Supervisors' room.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public comment. This is a time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak? I have no cards. Hearing none? If we could get a little guidance from County Council for the minutes, we have two Commissioners who were present for the October 26th meeting, so we don't have the votes to approve these minutes, correct?
For October 26th, that's correct. How about for the November 9th?
Okay, so we would hold those and move to the minutes of November 9th?
A question, Mr. Chairman and to the Council. Is it legally required for us to abstain from approving minutes if we weren't in attendance at that meeting?
That would be the appropriate way to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Moving to the minutes then, we'll table the minutes for the 26th. Moving to the minutes of November 9th, what is the pleasure of the Commission?
Move approval for the minutes for November 9th.
Is there a second?
Comment?
Yes.
I would second that with a typo correction on page seven, paragraph three. My last name.
I have a motion and a second with a reminder of spelling. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to item eight, approval of forfeiture and transfer of $10,000 security bond to the Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources as a result of the abandonment of CUP 114, County of Ventura. Nancy Suttles?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here and see you. I'm Nancy Suttles, as you said, with the Ventura County Planning Division, and I'm here to speak with you about this request on the forfeiture of a $10,000 bond that was Geo Petroleum's and transferring that to the Department of Oil and Gas and Geothermal Resources. Can you hear me okay? I feel like I'm having to...
I'm having a little difficulty hearing.
Okay, I will speak up. The project, the property itself, I will briefly, what I will do is do a brief recap on this request, and then I will turn it over to Mr. Bruce Hessen, who's a Deputy Director with Department of Oil and Gas and Geothermal Resources, otherwise known as Dogger. Did I say that right? And he can provide your Commission with a bit more detail in the event you have some specific questions, and he also has a few more photos of the site. But this particular oil facility operation is shown here on your right on the overhead, and it's also in your packet. It's a 79-acre parcel that has, located at 3523 East 5th Street, in the unincorporated area adjacent to Del Norte, and just north of East 5th. And you can see there on the right-hand side, there's two areas that have oil operations. These were approved by the county back in 1951, some time ago, to Exeter Oil, and the brief history behind that through the years, as a number of operators had taken over and operated that site and put in additional oil wells, and come about 1990, at that point, that's when Geo Petroleum took over operations, and then also during that decade, applied for a Class II disposal site, and with that proceeded, and at one point, the Dogger had approved that operation, and then later, it was determined that disposal was affecting neighboring oil operations, and then that was denied by Dogger at some point, at which point, the Planning Division then retracted its approval for operation of truck trips for that oil wastewater disposal. At that point in time, that's where Geo Petroleum declared bankruptcy. Throughout this period, we applied, we required the applicant to have a $10,000 bond, penal bond, to cover any occurrences that may happen at the site, that we would need to utilize that bond and carry out any kind of restoration or events that may occur that they did not take care of during their time there. So, given that situation after they declared bankruptcy, we went ahead and took a look at what we needed to do to forfeit that $10,000, and it so turns out that Dogger has gone ahead and moved forward with site restoration. There's approximately, I believe there's 20 wells, is that right? 20 wells and oil tanks. I actually did go out over the weekend and take a look at this site, and it's been subject to vandalism, so what we are requesting is that your Commission approve the resolution, which transfers the full amount of the bond in $10,000 to Dogger to help them continue with cleanup of the site, which will run approximately $800,000. We did look at the environmental document requirements for this transfer and determined that categorical exemption would need to be filed subsequent to your approval, and we've actually gotten no specific comments. We sent public notice out, newspapers, and surrounding property owners. One neighboring property owner, two, I believe, to the east of the site, was just concerned about what was going on, and I left a phone call and have not heard any other comments back since then from anyone. So, the staff recommendation basically is that your Commission approve and the resolution shown as Exhibit 5 in your packet, and allow, then that would allow the county to transfer this $10,000 bond amount to Dogger to allow them to clean up, I think it takes care of one of the tanks. And at this point, I'd like to turn any other details over, because I know Mr. Hessen has some additional background information he'd like to provide you.
Is there any question?
Any questions?
I have a question, but maybe, maybe it's for the gentleman, and that is, in reading this information, there was something in the back of my mind that we could have required a $10,000 bond for every well, and yet, this company and others have chosen just to say, just to put up a $10,000, well, it's going to cost $170,000. Is there any way in the future that we can enforce that or just not approve the project till they put a higher bond?
The way our, the wording under, it's actually Section 8107-5.6.5 of our non-coastal zoning ordinance, the way it's worded is it's an either or an or. It says either you will put $10,000, a $10,000 bond up for every well, or the operator has the option. So it kind of says, well, yes, you can do that, but then, in my mind, it kind of pulls the rug out from under us and says, well, no, you can go ahead and just, $10,000 for all your operations in Ventura County. So, we don't really have anything to fall back on that would allow us to say, yes, unless our own, we requested greater than $10,000 bonds, but frequently, it's just not, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to request when we really don't have, I think, the language and the ordinance that we might want, but we can cer, and I think we have in the past, and I haven't been, during my involvement with oil and gas operations, I would say it's probably pretty rare that we did ask for more than $10,000, and what it would require for us to have the backing would be to actually sit down and look and say, well, what's reasonable? As far as a full, if you have 20 wells, or if you have 10 wells, or, and try to arrive at what we think that reasonable amount is, and maybe try to craft something. It would take some additional staff time. I don't know if that answered your question, Mr.?
What would it take to change, you said it was a coastal?
It's a non-coastal zoning ordinance requirement, and it would take some staff effort, staff time, to sit down and look at the situation, look at what our oil operations are in the county. Certainly, many people would say $10,000 is not enough, but then to maybe have, at one point, we thought of a, some type of an increasing scale, depending on how big or how small your operation was, and attempted to do that, but we could see it would take a fair amount of staff time, because certainly, all the oil companies in the county would want to be involved and participate in that process. So it would take directing staff to take a look at this, and it's not, it isn't a funded item that staff would need to, in my estimation, it could take you three to six months, minimum, to...
And what you're saying is this is probably the first time in a long time that this has happened?
Absolutely, and I know Mr. Hessen can probably speak to that fact, that even though it looks a little scary, you only have $10,000 for an entire operation, there are funds with the state of California. This is a rare occurrence in Ventura County, from what I understand. I don't know if this is the one and only, but I'm sure, and it, most of the operations, I think, are in fairly good order, and this is one of the worst examples that one would see out there.
I guess I would just recommend and hope in the future that there's, that there's a way that, you're right, if there are 20 wells, you don't have to have $10,000, but maybe, maybe $100,000 rather than $200,000, or some way to bring that up into reason. So if you, if you, let's say there's 20 wells, and you say, we want to have a bond of $100,000. Do you now have the authority to do that?
I think we do, the way the ordinance is written, it's just that it also is written on the flip side, that the applicant has, is allowed to give us a $10,000 bond for all operations.
Well, we have, first of all, the County of Ventura hasn't done a brand-new oil permit for years, probably 10, 12, 15 years, and right now, we are processing new oil permits. The ordinance actually says not less than $10,000, and so on these new permits, we intend to get the bond amount that it takes to reclaim, not less than $10,000, we intend to use those words. It's actually going back and enforcing the permits that were done in the 30s, 40s, 50s, and 60s, where this $10,000 language is, that we have the problem of, you know, dedicating enough staff time to actually go back in and challenge the oil industry on this language, but the new permits that we're doing, no, we're getting the appropriate amount.
Do these permits, are they on a time basis, do they expire every, are, when do you see the permit for an oil well? How long is that permit good for?
Well, yeah, it depends, because we've been doing them over a period of 60 years, so the old permits, like, you know, CUP 10, those don't have, they don't have, not only do they not have an expiration date in them, they don't have a limit to the number of wells them in, it just says you can conduct oil and gas processing operations. We have a lot less ability to do condition compliance on those than the new ones, where we say you have exactly six wells, and this is exactly how many trucks that you can go, and this is the exact hours of operation that you can operate. So then, you know, the new, the new ones that we're processing now for the first time in years have, have all of the current conditions, and they will have the current bonding for, for the appropriate amount for reclamation.
If I had a permit for six wells, and I want to put another well in, I have to come back to the planning, the planning department?
Well, it depends on how the condition was written. A lot of the new conditions say, I want to do, you know, I want to phase it in, and eventually, this site will be for 15 wells, I'm going to start with six. So when he comes in for the seventh, we would issue zoning clearances, we would look to see if they were in condition, in compliance with their conditions, and then issue a zoning clearance, but we would look to see what they wanted to do at full build-out and permit it for that.
Something, there may be an opportunity, even for the old leases, they're either up for renewal or adding, that you could then come back and ask for a higher amount of bond.
Yes, if any oil permit was up for renewal, we would bring them to the current standards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Dukas?
How many, how many stakeholders do we have in this situation? I mean, in this particular one, we're talking about one company, but how many do we have in Ventura County?
Companies?
Yeah. Approximately ballpark?
I don't, you know, I'll let, Mr. Wilson, if I could invite him, because he certainly is the...
I'll defer that question to him then.
Unless there's some other questions, we could both be available.
Yes, excuse me, Nancy. Listening to everything you've said, I'm understanding where you're going, and I'm reading this sentence on page 14. It relates to the NCZL that says, "To increase the security amount would require dedication of non-funded staff time to determine the security amount, coordinate with oil companies, et cetera, et cetera," which is what you're referring to.
Yes.
I take what you said and what this reads, kind of as an interpretation of policy decision on the part of planning, not, not to pursue the staff time to get this done, but now I'm a little confused by what, what the Director is saying, in that you do have the ability to go beyond and set the limit beyond $10,000. Could you clarify, please?
Sure, because the section in the ordinance on securities, where it deals with oil permits, it's Section 8107-565. The way that it has been interpreted in the past is, you can, you can have the opportunity as a, as a oil company to pay $10,000 per well, or $10,000 per operator, so of course, everyone should... So of course, everyone chose the $10,000 per operator. But what the language actually says is that we'll accept an amount of not less than $10,000. It doesn't say that we will only do $10,000. So the, the staff time is involved in figuring out exactly what it would take for, you know, each well and what that, what that operation has going on out there, instead of, more simply, we can just say, we want $10,000 per well, and that's an easy place for us to start, and not have to expend a lot of staff time with the exact amount of, of reclamation. I mean, we did this for mining, and it took probably two years of work, and that was probably 10 years ago, and we're about ready to do another two years of work to figure out exactly what it takes to reclaim a mining site. So it does take a lot of staff expenditures to go, I mean, I don't know how many operators we have, but there are a lot of them, and some of them have been in business for 70-plus years, so you'd have to go out to that facility and say, what is it going to take to reclaim CUP 10? I mean, it would be a lot of staff time involved with it. And we have another agency, a state agency on top of the county agency, that also has funds to do reclamation. So we don't want to double bond either, so, you know, it would be in, in participation with Dogger.
But $10,000, by today's standards, is insufficient to do what needs to be done?
No.
For a single well?
I would say no.
Is that, that's what I'm interpreting?
If there were a problem.
So the bond would, bond would, that would be reset at some point, would be in excess of $10,000, I assume?
It, it should be. I mean, and I think the planning director, if we were to stop now and try to go backwards and say, now we want to change our standards and we want everybody to come up to this new standard, that's what would take a lot of time. I think what we do now is we wait until they come in, and especially with the new ones. As has been mentioned, we try to deal with those using our most recent conditions, of course, and then we do a little bit harder negotiation. But if you just said a blanket $10,000 per well from now on, that would be simpler than trying to go back into the old permits and saying, what's remiss here and, and how are we going to rectify the situation? That's what would take the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank Nancy for her efforts in this regard, and also thank the commission for the opportunity to speak here today. I just wanted to add briefly to what Nancy had already described, a sort of part of the history. This site here actually is, I categorize it as the worst oil operation site we have in the county here. The district manager for the Division of Oil and Gas, and our district comprises all of Ventura County and northwest LA County. And GEO has a history of non-compliance, and as such, in 2004, we issued a formal order against GEO Petroleum statewide. They had a total of 58 wells statewide, and, and they appealed that hearing, and at that hearing, they tried to declare bankruptcy as a means to go ahead and, to, to stop the hearing, if you will. The hearing proceeded, and the ruling was upheld. GEO was ordered to go ahead and plug and abandon all the wells, and to do other corrective action, not only at this site, but the other sites listed in the statewide formal order. And when they did not comply with that, the wells became deserted. And what the division has done, and just to give you a little information on the division's funding, the division is funded through an assessment on oil production, roughly six cents per barrel. And that six cents basically funds our whole agency, which is roughly $18 million a year to fund us. Of that $18 million, $1 million is set aside for these types of situations. And as one of six districts, I compete with other districts for that funding to take care of these, these projects. We did receive some funding to go ahead and not only plug and abandon two of the wells that are at that main site, one of them being the commercial disposal well that Nancy mentioned. Those two wells have already been abandoned at this point, at a cost of $72,000. In addition to that, and I do have some pictures here that, of the site, if you need some more information, which may be helpful, if I could just hand these out, these are, here's the key. But yes, I categorize this as one of the worst sites. So headquarters allocated money, first off, to go ahead and drain the fluids that are in the tanks, and we've done that as a spill prevention measure. And I now have authorization, went through a competitive bid process, and have $147,000 allocated to dismantle and remove all of those tanks that you see in those pictures. And so just in general terms, you know, the division does have money to go ahead and address these situations, but of course, a million dollars statewide doesn't always cover all the, you know, we, we have to prioritize from district to district. And so when, you know, Nancy suggested that there might be some additional funds to augment our efforts, we welcomed that, and, and, you know, we certainly appreciate that effort. But there is work ongoing right now to go ahead and take care of this site, and when this facility is removed, the longer-term plan would be to go ahead and address the remaining 20 orphaned wells that are out there, too. There is also some possibility or option for the adjacent operator, Chase Production, who has ongoing operations, to maybe take some of these good wells over that have resource potential, and then any that were no good, that I'll continue to pursue funding through the state to go ahead and get those addressed. But I will say, in general terms, this is the worst site that we have in the district. Back in 2003, we went through a series of formal orders in our district. This was one site, the other one was Marie Teague and Dual Petroleum out in South Tappo Canyon. They're in Ventura County, but that site has been completely taken care of. We abandoned 17 wells in that field, and also took out the tank facilities there. And the other site would be Lobodo on the Elkins property. That, too, was formal ordered. There, there are two tanks, the fluids have been drained from that as a spill prevention measure, and we're currently working with the Elkins mineral interest holders. They are interested in having those wells go to Joro, Inc., who's an operator, I'd say, in compliance, good operator in our district. So the division is, is addressing these situations as they come up, but I'll tell you that, you know, the ones I just mentioned were the worst that we have. As far as other sites in the district that are orphaned, there are none. I mean, the ones that I just mentioned were the, the three worst situations, and we're dealing with them. And I don't have really anything else, but of course, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Start over here, Commissioner Rodriguez?
The report indicates, I'm a little confused, there's two addresses, a Sturgis Road address, and then there's this address here on, on East Fifth Street, and it refers to a 79-acre parcel. How is that defined up there? I mean, I realize what we're talking about specifically isn't 79 acres, but.
Yeah, the, the lower part of the, the one area that's circled, that contains the lion's share of those tanks that you see there. The tanks that do have fluids in them and stuff that we drain and so forth are in that lower parcel. On that lower parcel was the commercial disposal well and another idle oil and gas well. Those wells have been abandoned. If you go through that northern parcel, and even above there, too, that is where the remaining wells are at. As part of our work on that lower facility, there are some other empty tanks in that other parcel above, and even a little bit further north. Those are all going to be taken out. When we're done with that facility work, you won't see any more tank facilities out there. What would be remaining would be just some wells in that higher parcel there, and even up, up above. Those wells will just, you know, those will be addressed either through Chase acquiring them, or us plugging and abandoning those, those wells.
Thank you. Mr. Hesson, for the record, could you state your name?
Yes, my name is Bruce Hesson, H-E-S-S-O-N, and I'm the district deputy for the Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources for the Ventura District.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Dukas?
How many operators would you say there are in Ventura County?
Okay, Ventura, there are 45 within our district, so if I take out the ones in LA County, roughly 35, 35 fields, and we have 50, 50 to 55 active operators in our district. So I'll say within Ventura County, let's just say 50 active operators. The, I mean, the biggest operators we have in the district right now would be Era Energy for the Ventura Field, which is the largest field we have, and that accounts for roughly 40% of the county production. And then the other operator is Occidental Petroleum, who recently acquired Vintage Petroleum Operations, and that includes 20, 20 fields and roughly about 2,000 wells, about 40% of the wells in the district. So from my perspective, that's a good thing. We have two very big, very well-funded, if you will, operators in Era and Oxy. And then the remaining, you know, we have other operations here, Berry Petroleum, other, what we call large independents and so forth, and then we do have some of the smaller mom and pop operations.
So each one of those operators has, are bonded in this, in this same.
In various amounts. The way bonding works with the division is if you have 50 wells or less, you would post a, a blanket bond of $100,000 for your wells. We don't specifically have any bonding requirements for facilities and so forth, it's for wells. But when we get into a situation like this, where we do a formal order and the wells are declared deserted, that means the wells and all the attendant facilities. And so we can use that bond coverage, not only for the wells, but also for the tank facilities. If you have more than 50 wells, 51 or more, the minimum requirement is a $250,000 blanket bond. And there's also a, what we call a super bond. I know Era has it, Oxy, the larger companies carry a $1 million super bond, as you call it, to cover their operations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Molitor?
What happens to this land now? This company declared bankruptcy. Who owns the land that the wells and tanks are on now?
The owner is a gentleman named Mr. Bill Lennox, and he owns the surface and the mineral rights there. When we do a formal order, we also notify the property owner of our actions, and as part of that, they, they give their consent for us to access the property, if you will, to perform this work. And so, you know, Mr. Lennox is in approval with us doing this work here to remove the tanks, facilities, obviously, and the wells. And if there was to be any kind of a transfer of some of these other wells that are remaining, that would be done only with the mineral interest holders' approval, Mr. Lennox, our approval, and of course, Chase, if they were interested.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this point, I would open a public hearing. I have no other cards. Anyone wishing to speak? Close the public hearing. Ask for any disclosure by the commission, starting with Commissioner Molitor?
I have no disclosure.
I have no disclosure.
I have no disclosure?
I have no disclosure, but I will comment, I've been going past this site for probably almost 50 years, and, and I've seen it deteriorate significantly over the last, I don't know, five years, I've paid attention to it. I do have one question, if it's not out of order. I'm curious, there's a facility directly across the street from this site, as I recall. That is in compliance and operational and not part of this issue. Is that correct?
For Chase?
Yeah.
Chase?
Mr. Hesson, if you could.
Sorry, yes, Chase, Chase Production Company operates, gosh, I think it's probably 40 to 50 wells, not only across the street, but north of there, too. And they are in full compliance with the division requirements. I categorize them as a good operator.
The only other comment I would make is, I, I quite strongly believe it's well within, it's certainly within much less than the three miles from the city limits of Oxnard. It's probably closer to a quarter mile, maybe, outside the city limits. That's all I have.
The chair would entertain a motion. What's the will of the commission here?
I'd move that the commission adopt a resolution determining the full amount of the $10,000 security to be forfeited and transferred to the Department of Dogger.
We also were, the other request was that we, there's an environmental piece, and that becomes part of the recommended actions.
Actually, the.
Yeah, there's nothing before us, and I wanted to make sure.
You know, the way I, it's written is the planning director finds that a categorical exemption will be filed, so it doesn't, we don't have, actually have it as a action by the commission.
Okay.
And I presume that's sufficient to do that, to do it that way?
That is sufficient.
Okay.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The vote is four, zero. Commissioner Westmore is absent. Moving on. Let's talk about farm. Ms. Mayor.
Good morning, Chair Bartels and members of the Planning Commission. For the record, I'm Tricia Meyer of the Resource Management Agency's Planning Division. I'm here this morning to present the proposed farmland buffer ordinance to you, which requires amendments to both the coastal and non-coastal zoning ordinances. And before beginning my presentation, I just wanted to clarify that the proposed farmland buffer ordinances before you today weren't the result of my work alone, but rather are the results of cooperative work from a number of sources. I worked closely with Bruce Smith, the manager of the General Plan Section, to develop these ordinances, and in fact, he probably will jump in to help answer some of the questions as I walk you through this.
Excuse me, Tricia, could I ask you to speak a little closer to the mic, or speak up a little bit?
And long before putting pen to paper to draft these ordinances, Bruce and I worked many months with the Agricultural Policy Advisory Committee, that's the county's APAC committee, who was in the process of refining their policy document on ag urban buffers themselves. And we drew upon APAC's early work and received helpful input from both Rita Graham and Susan Johnson of the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, as well as Julie Bula from the Planning Division, who helped draft the original APAC policy. I want to acknowledge their involvement in this process and emphasize that this was, this was really a collaborative effort, it wasn't, it wasn't me alone. And then before I begin, one other thing I just, I wanted to mention that the time of the, the scheduled board hearing for this item before the Board of Supervisors, which is to be held March 20th, and was included in the legal notice for this item, has been changed from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Just so any, so it's on the record, and anyone who's here for this item would be aware of that. So let's begin. See, I have to, there we go. The genesis of these ordinances began with a general directive from the Board of Supervisors back in 2005, for us to prepare an ordinance amendment requiring a 300-foot buffer between agricultural land and new development. So that's how this begin, began. At its core, a farmland buffer acts as a physical separation between urban and agricultural uses of land. It's believed that a physical buffer minimizes potential land use conflicts between the two uses, and the underlying intent is really to find middle ground that allows the farmer to continue to work the land without raising the ire of non, non-farming neighbors. The purpose of the two farmland buffer ordinances before you is really no different. These ordinances are structured to minimize potential land use conflicts between farming and non-farming operations, to strengthen existing ag policies, which I'll elaborate on in just a moment, and ultimately, to maintain the viability of the farming industry in After the recent series of articles in the Ventura Star detailing farming on the edge, which concluded this past weekend, you're probably all familiar with the areas of concern and tension that arise between farmers and urban dwellers, and you could probably add to the list that you see up here on the screen. What it comes down to is really this. For the farmer, the production of agricultural, agriculture is a business, and he rightfully views it as such, with concerns about vandalism, loss of profit, and increased, increased liability. For the suburban resident or business owner located near a farm or a farming operation, common concerns revolve around dust, and smells, and smoke, and light, and the perceived health risk of pesticide spraying. There are a variety of existing federal, state, and county regulations in place to address this tension, and the potential public health issues that arise between farming and non-farming operations. They are mentioned in the staff report, but I'm going to touch on them quickly for you, because they do help to set the stage for the farmland buffer ordinances before you. On a national level, the EPA Office of Pesticide Programs regulates the use of pesticides. Then California has its own strict pesticide regulations that vary by crop type, and are designed to protect residential areas, schools, and other sensitive sites during spraying operations. These are implemented through the Agricultural Commissioner's Office by their field inspectors. On a county level, Ventura County adopted a right-to-farm ordinance that protects commercial agriculture from nuisance claims, and requires mandatory disclosure to neighboring property owners of potential noise, odors, dust, and spraying that might. owners of potential noise, odors, dust, and spraying that might result from farming. The intent is to set realistic expectations for new residents or occupants of businesses adjacent to farming operations. Then, you know, kind of honing in on our actual county zoning ordinance, our zoning ordinances include general language to protect agricultural resources from land use conflicts, but an actual buffer is only required at this point for waste processing facilities and waste transfer stations where three-hundred-foot, a three-hundred-foot buffer is the rule. In the same vein, the County General Plan includes a program to develop standards regulating development adjacent to agricultural uses, with fencing and spray buffers specifically mentioned. Staff believes the new farmland buffer ordinances meet the intent of the General Plan Program, respond to the Board's directive, and complement existing farmland regulations. They strengthen existing code requirements for new discretionary non-farming development adjacent to farmland by setting the buffer standard at three-hundred feet unless a vegetative buffer is installed or a waiver is granted, and there are several waivers which I'll go over later. Now I'm going to go ahead and jump into the content of the farmland buffer ordinances. Although staff recommends amendment of both the coastal and non-coastal zoning ordinances, you saw that in Exhibits Two and Three of your packet, the text and substance of the ordinance amendments in, in those two different exhibits are nearly identical. And I want you just to keep this in mind as I summarize the ordinances, knowing that the general statements I make will apply to both. Both ordinances open with definitions of key terms. These definitions are mirrored in the two ordinances. I'm not going to read the precise definitions for each one because you had those in your packet, but I do want to give you a working understanding of their meaning because they are integrally related to how this farmland buffer ordinance is implemented. Farmland is land that contains crops or orchards or where the soil has been classified as prime, statewide importance, unique, or locally important by the state's important farmlands inventory. And actually, this is probably a good time to introduce Exhibit Eight, which was handed to you this morning when you came in. In rereading the definitions, staff noted that the second part of the definition for farmland in both ordinances is a bit awkward, and so I'd like to propose new wording for that, which you'll see popping up here on the screen. This is how it would read. Land, farmland would be land that either contains crop or orchard production or wherein its soil is classified as prime, statewide importance, unique, or locally important by the most recent California State Department of Conservation Farmland Mapping and Monitoring Program. And this is where the change occurred. This definition does not apply to land that has been developed with a permitted non-farming use or is used in a lawful manner inconsistent with these farmland soil classifications. The second sentence has been amended to be more succinct and less awkward. Essentially, it means that the parcel is not already developed or legally used in a way that precludes the use of the land for crops and orchards, because then obviously it doesn't make sense to apply a farmland buffer to it if that were the case. Okay. Going back to our definition section, so that's in Exhibit Eight. So we have farmland, then we have farmland buffers, the next definition. We've already discussed the general idea of a farmland buffer being sort of a separation or a physical, a physical separation between farming and non-farming activities. The ordinance definition simply clarifies what may be included in a farmland buffer. Things like distance, actual space, topography, vegetative barriers, and agreements for modified cultural practices could all be incorporated and create a farmland buffer. And then to define modified farming cultural practices, because that hasn't been defined, these are changes to standard cultural practices in farming that reduce the likelihood of off-site movement of dust, fertilizer, spray drift, and, and things of that nature. Examples might include hand spraying or not spraying on the rows, you know, the, the rows of the crop that are closest to the, the non-farming use, or it might include placing a road or buildings, maybe some of the ag buildings, between the sensitive use and, and the actual farming operation. The definition for sensitive non-farming land use, this is, this is really key to the ordinance because this is what tells us, what are those uses that really require a buffer? The way the definition reads in the ordinance says, "new discretionary development, subdivision, or other non-farming-related use of the land that could result in conflicts between crop and orchard production and sensitive non-farming land uses, or change of use that intensifies potential impacts between farmland and non-farming-related land uses." So it applies to both new uses and subdivisions and an intensification of existing uses. And then the last one was vegetative barrier, and you probably have a general vision of what a vegetative barrier could be. It's, it's more or less a semi-coarse mix of trees, shrubs, plants, berms, things that are put together and create, they're basically spaced and planted in such a way that they prevent spray drift, dust, and other land use conflicts between the farming and the non-farming operation. And when a vegetative barrier is installed, the width of the required buffer is reduced from three-hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet, so it's essentially halved. The ordinance then takes these definitions and describes the applicability of the farmland buffer requirement. A farmland buffer is only going to apply when it meets all of this criteria, and I'll go ahead and run through it for you. When it's a new or expanding use, as we, when a new or expanding use is identified as requiring a buffer by the ordinance, so if it's on a list that's in the ordinance, then it requires a buffer. When it, and it's a discretionary project or subdivision, so it's not going to apply to ministerial development that's approved over the counter. And the farmland is located in unincorporated Ventura County and outside a city sphere of influence. This obviously won't apply to anything within city limits. And it's adjacent to or on farmland-zoned agricultural-exclusive, open space, rural agricultural, and then that would be for the non-coastal zoning ordinance. In the coastal zoning ordinance, it applies to farmland-zoned coastal open space, coastal agricultural, or coastal rural by the, by the coastal zoning ordinance. And remember, all of these have to be true in order for it to apply. It must be adjacent to or on farmland designated agricultural, open space, or rural by the County General Plan. So when all of those things occur, then, then, then it would require a farmland buffer. And to give you a visual perspective, I asked our graphics department to produce a map that shows all of the farmland that meets that criteria. That is, farmland located in unincorporated Ventura County, outside of the city sphere, zoned with the appropriate zoning designations, and then also designated either as either ag, open space, or rural by the general plan. This is what they came up with. The resolution on this is not so good. You're missing right here, these lines here that show up as white should be red, and those show the city spheres. It's a little difficult maybe to make those out, unfortunately. However, you also see here, this blue line that runs along the coast is showing you what's within the coastal area. So those are, so you see this farmland that's right along the ocean there, so that's, that's basically the area that's, that's covered by the, the coast, that would be covered by the amendments to the coastal zoning ordinance. And in all of this green line is the, all of these parcels that are green, that are highlighted in green, are the farmland that met the criteria that I just showed you on that previous page. You'll notice that the highlighted farmland covers much of the Las Poses Valley, the Santa Clara Valley, and the Oxnard Plain. In the coastal area, approximately twenty-three-hundred acres of land are shown there, and in the non-coastal areas, you know, you've got, I mean, this, this is a lot of land. This is about a hundred and eleven thousand acres in total in the non-coastal areas. So this, this ordinance really would affect a significant amount of farmland. And this doesn't even include all of the parcels adjacent to the highlighted farmland. Remember, we talked about if it's adjacent to this farmland, that the buffer might apply. So this is just showing those actual parcels. But it does illustrate that many of the adjacent parcels would be located within city limits or within a city sphere. That's particularly true, I believe, in Santa Paula and Oxnard. Oh, no. My little pen, there we go. In Santa Paula, you can, you can kind of make out the lines of the city sphere actually, actually follow where this farmland is located, and that's true over here in the Oxnard area and in Camarillo as well. So some of these adjacent parcels, really, they're right, they're, they're abutting prime farmland in the unincorporated area. And the ordinance would not apply to those. Moving ahead to the nuts and bolts of the ordinance, I want to elaborate for a moment on the uses that would require a buffer. You see a list up here, and this is not the exhaustive list, but it's, it's many of the things that would require a buffer. The complete list is within the ordinance, the text of the ordinance. But just to give you an idea of how we determine these uses, we basically combed through the use matrix in the non-coastal and the coastal zoning ordinances and evaluated the compatibility of each use with crop and orchard production. So, you know, some thought went into it, would this work next to crop and orchard production or not? And the way the county zoning ordinances are structured, each of these uses is a main heading, so everything you see up there is sort of a main heading, and then there's, there are a number of sub, subheadings that fall underneath that. So we, what we've done is we've taken the broad categories and said that the buffer applies to these. It would all, also apply to all of the subheadings beneath those main headings. For instance, farmworker housing complexes fall under the main use category of dwellings, so they would require a buffer, even though they're not specifically listed. They're not specifically listed out in the ordinance, but because they fall under the category of dwellings, they would, and we'll, we'll discuss this particular issue in more detail in just a minute. But uses that don't require discretionary permit, like most single-family homes, second dwelling units, animal keeping, if it falls within the parameters of our code, all of those would not require a farmland buffer because the ordinance doesn't apply to ministerial development. As another example, uses like wineries and nurseries fall under the broader category of crop and orchard production and, and would not require a farmland buffer because these are precisely the uses the ordinance is trying to protect. It's also important to note that where an existing discretionary use is expanding will have an impact, only the newest portion of that use is required to provide the buffer. So just as an example, let's say there's a church structure and they want to add a new Sunday school classroom or something, or a building that's going to have Sunday school classrooms. It's entirely possible that if the church had been there and it predates this ordinance, that there's not a, a three-hundred-foot buffer between, you know, whatever buildings they have on that property and the neighboring farming activity. So what would happen is that we would require that the new, the newest portion of the structure be setbacks, or that there's modified cultural agreements or something that's in place that creates that farmland buffer for the newest portion, portion of the structure. We wouldn't prevent them from having the use, we wouldn't make them move the existing building, but we would apply it to the newest portion of that use that was being proposed. So going back to the farmworker housing question, I want to focus for a moment on how the treatment of farmworker housing complexes differs from that of a farmworker dwelling unit, because those are two different things. The farmworker dwelling unit is considered an accessory use to the agricultural production, and in many cases is permitted ministerially. So typically, you could have one farmworker dwelling unit for every forty acres of cropland that you're, that you're cultivating, for instance. So that's, you know, that's, that's not going to require, those farm, individual farmworker dwelling units are not going to require a buffer. Where it's not allowed by right and requires discretionary approval in the coastal and non-coastal zones, a farmworker dwelling unit still doesn't trigger the farmland buffer ordinance because it doesn't fall under the broader use of dwellings in the zoning ordinance. So there's a distinction between farmworker housing complex and farmworker dwelling unit. A farmworker housing complex, by contrast, could be the sole use on a property and could be operated by someone other than the farmer, and the farmers can live there and go work somewhere else, which is very different from a farmworker dwelling unit. A farmworker housing complex will almost always be located adjacent to agriculture and function more like an apartment complex, as shown up here in that this is actually a picture of the new V Sesar Chavez Farmworker Housing Complex in Oxnard. As proposed in the non-coastal zoning ordinance, a buffer is required for farmworker housing complexes. The coastal zoning ordinance doesn't, does not currently allow farmworker housing complexes, so that's a moot point. Farmers, at least we assume, farmers have more control over their own cultural practices on the site, and so what we imagine is that farmers are probably, farmers who are trying to create a farmworker housing complex are more likely to change their own cultural, farming cultural practices to create that buffer by doing the hand spraying, or, you know, by doing things that are different in that area that are, that's closest to the farmworker housing. So we don't imagine that by adopting this ordinance that we're going to put a damper on all farmworker housing development within the county. At least we hope not. On institutional uses, this was shown in the original list, and within the text of the two ordinances, government buildings, educational, and other institutional uses also require a farmland buffer. This includes uses like county jails, community colleges, and elementary schools. If a case arises where the buffer seems unnecessary, the proposed use can be examined on a case-by-case basis, and the buffer can be modified or waived if specific criteria are met. For instance, waivers may apply to new county fire stations because many of them are cited on parcels too small for a buffer to apply. But in general, these institutional uses are precisely the types of high intensity, high human intensity uses where a farmland buffer makes sense. Before I go on, I don't know if there are any questions on what I've covered so far.
Questions? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah. On the institutional uses you just mentioned, I'm consciously aware of a sheriff's facility off Todd Road that is surrounded by orchard and is probably being looked at for expansion due to population growth. How is that going to be impacted?
I don't know the specifics of that particular site, so I really, I couldn't comment on how, how, we'd have to, we'd have to look at it, because the way the ordinance is structured, we would look at these on a case-by-case basis, look at what the size of that parcel is, what's surrounding it, whether that farmland meets the criteria that, that I've just described on here. But we certainly, we don't, we don't exempt it from review. We would review it just like we would anything else.
Okay, thank you.
That particular facility, again, excuse me, I'm Bruce Smith, Planning Division. On that particular facility has a conditional use permit, and within it, it has requirements for buffering. I do not know what they specifically are because that, of course, predates this particular Nonetheless, when the Public Works Agency then moves forward on behalf of the Sheriff's Department to actually construct the extra wings of that facility, they'll be having to do the update of perhaps, or modifications necessary to that permit, and we'll have to take a look at it at that time. But I believe it did have some buffering associated with that CUP.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dukas? Commissioner Molitor? Just, we're excluding, excluding secondary education from the schools, you said elementary schools.
Oh, no, all, all schools. Yes.
And the other question I had is, we have, within the green areas, we also have existing community where parcel sizes and existing community are not going to be in conformance with some of this stuff. Bardstown's a perfect example. You've got existing community with a church within it on a very small, small parcel. Goes back to case by case. Is there an existing community highlight so that down the road, when we're all not doing this anymore, the, the terms of this acknowledge what exists?
There is not currently in the ordinance anything that references existing communities. No.
Thank you.
However, on that issue, when we talk about, in just a little bit about the exemptions or grounds for waivers, I believe those are factors that will affect existing lots or development on existing lots. For instance, there was, in the newspaper, I believe it was The Star, mentioned a historical structure in Somas that was adjacent to ag and that it might be affected by this ordinance. Well, that lot is so small, it would actually qualify for one of the waivers that we'll get to in a minute, but I'll defer that until later.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and go on and show you a series of graphics to help illustrate how the farmland buffer would be applied to a particular project. This diagram shows a typical farmland buffer. This isn't a real parcel or proposal, but a hypothetical application for a new veterinary hospital. The hospital could be any of the sensitive non-farming land uses that I showed you on the previous, the previous slide. Oh, there we go. Having trouble finding my pointer there. Okay, so we've got this new veterinary hospital that's proposed, and surrounding this, to the north, we've got, we've got a residential neighborhood that's already existing, and then we've got an avocado orchard over here to the, to the east that's, and this avocado orchard is within the sphere of influence of the city. So you see, this is sort of, this, this blue line is the boundary for the sphere of influence. And then we've got a citrus orchard over here, which is actually an orange orchard, but looks like lemons on this slide. And, and this, this site has got the appropriate zoning, it's got agricultural exclusive zoning, it's designated as agricultural in the general plan, and it's outside the city sphere of influence, and so the buffer for this new proposed use applies to this site. So anything that's touching this site applies. And so you see, we've got a hundred and fifty feet to three hundred feet, and then we've also got an eight-foot fence, and you'll have to just imagine that instead of looking at this in one dimension, that this eight-foot fence is actually on the property line between the, the farming operation and the new, and the new proposed use. Because the intent with these fences would really be for it to be as close as it could to the farming operation, and obviously, we're not going to force the farmer to put a new fence on his side of the property line unless he agrees to that. So this is essentially, this is essentially what, what the buffer would look like in, in this particular scenario. And the buffer is measured from the property line, that again, I think was mentioned in the staff report, and the property line is, is this sort of red, red line right there. So it's measured, it's measured from, from that point unless there is an agreement for modified cultural practices occurring on the farming site, and that, in that case, in the-- And in that case, then the starting point for that buffer moves. It shifts accordingly. The ordinances are structured to allow uses compatible with farmland to be located within the buffer. We didn't want this to be too restrictive. So as we went through that use matrix and looked for uses that would be incompatible, we also looked for uses that would be incompatible, I mean, that would be compatible. This isn't an exhaustive list of the uses permitted within a buffer, but it shows the diversity of uses allowed. Everything from greenhouses, range cattle, and ag tourism to front yard setbacks. The noncoastal zoning ordinance provides a full list on pages three and four in your packet. Given the diversity of uses on this complete list, there are ways of using the buffer space that may work to optimize development for the applicant and satisfy the buffer requirement at the same time. For instance, a combination of a road and a parking lot could be located within the buffer area of the veterinary hospital that I showed you on the last slide. You'll also notice on this list, at the very end, this catch-all at the end allows the planning director, in consultation with the ag commissioner, some latitude in determining whether a use will be low human intensity and therefore permitted within the buffer. I mean, as it reads, it says similar low human intensity uses consistent with the purpose of the buffer. We recognize that at this point in time, we don't know all of the uses that might be proposed in the future. And we haven't contemplated, we may not have contemplated them, but they might be appropriate within a buffer. So we've kind of left this catch-all at the end to catch those. And this next diagram shows you what it might look like if you use some of these, you know, on a parcel. In this case, we're looking at new single-family homes on this proposed, this is the proposed development right here. And then we've got the same citrus orchard and the same avocado orchard and the same residential subdivision up above. And in this case, they've used, this is the buffer area. They've used that buffer area for obviously what must be very generous front yard setbacks and the street. And then we've got a walking trail over here on this side. And so the developer has taken what must have been requirements for his project and used them within the buffer in a way that works with this ordinance. And we think there's a definite synergy between some of these regulatory requirements and this requirement for the buffer. A buffer could be used for stormwater detention basin that's required or it could be used for required habitat restoration area or maybe even for a required wetland setback. So the buffer doesn't have to just be empty space. It can be something that's actually useful for the developer. A good example of this would be Ventura's new aquatic park on Telephone Road at Kimball. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that. It's located within the city of Ventura, not subject, wouldn't be subject to this farmland buffer ordinance, but a 300-foot buffer was required to buffer the new park from the strawberry crops growing on the south side of Telephone Road. And I have a couple of pictures here of the 300-foot buffer that was installed for this aquatic center. And basically, it's an aquatic center and then it's a whole park. So there's soccer fields and the like out there as well. The buffer consists of a six-lane arterial roadway, that's Telephone Road, which is approximately 108 feet in width, a landscaped area along the park's Telephone Road frontage, which if you drive by, you definitely see. And then they put in this walking path that's along that landscaped area. And then they've also got a very large parking lot on that side of the site. It's a great example of a farmland buffer that didn't hinder development of the parcel in any substantial way, though it likely required thorough site planning at the outset, at the very beginning of the project, and that would be the key. If you're trying to combine, you know, some of these regulatory requirements, then you're really going to need to look at the site as a whole at the very beginning and see how you might be able to put some of these within the buffer area. This last diagram shows the buffer configuration where an agreement for modified farming cultural practices has been signed. In this case, let's call him the lemon farmer over here, has agreed to do hand spraying or alternative application of pesticides and fertilizer along the south side of the project frontage. And I know this is sort of hard to see on this particular, at this resolution here, but this is really the buffer area here. And you can see how this line has moved so that it's measured before it gets to the property line, in this case, for the new proposed veterinary hospital. Whereas on this side, he's not doing the hand spraying. It could be that on this side, he already had an existing ag road that helps create that buffer. So it wasn't a problem to do maybe a little bit of change in his cultural practices along the first rows of crops on this side, whereas over here, that wasn't possible. So this allows, this gives the veterinary hospital more space to develop their particular project in the way that they'd like because the agreement for modified cultural practices was made with the neighboring farmer. And the other thing about these practices is that they really need to be in written form and legally enforceable. So that's why the ordinance is, it's really written to make sure that enforcement can occur on those and that there's not some shift over time of where that line or where that buffer is located. Otherwise, there's no guarantee that cultural practices won't be altered in the future. Which is a great segue to the waivers and deviations written into the ordinance. These are some of the waivers that Bruce was just mentioning with parcels that may be located in existing communities and other parcels that are really either too small or have a different type of topography. We can go ahead and go through these. The first exception includes waivers for existing topography, vegetative screening, and other physical features that help create a natural buffer. So if you've already got things like that or you're installing a vegetative buffer, then you're creating this natural buffer. And so there's the ability for the planning director, in consultation with the ag commissioner's office or the ag commissioner, to either reduce or fully waive the buffer requirement. Exception B is where the language allowing modified cultural practices in the place of a 300-foot or 150-foot buffer distance has been added. So that way, that's in there. And C, the size of the parcel is taken into consideration when determining the width of the buffer, particularly for existing parcels where the size may preclude incorporation of a full buffer, like those that are in existing communities. Clearly, existing parcels 6,000 square feet or less in size would be exempt from providing a farmland buffer. They're just too small. They can't put, you know, say they're surrounded by farmland. They can't put 300 feet on every side. However, newly created parcels in a proposed subdivision are less likely to receive a waiver. If you're setting out, you know, your subdivision plan for what it's going to look like and how the parcels are going to be configured, you're less likely to get a waiver from the buffer requirement when you're trying to, just because you're trying to make smaller parcels. Then D is a catch-all for future issues we may not have considered again, okay? And it's clear, where it's clear that there's not going to be any land use conflicts, then we want the ability for that person, that applicant, to be able to come in and submit that proof to the planning director and for that to be evaluated. And all of these are, as I mentioned, going to be approved by the planning director in consultation with the agricultural commissioner. And the burden of proof remains with the applicant to demonstrate how they meet the criteria for a waiver. On implementation, the proposed ordinance is attempt to integrate the tools and procedures necessary to implement the buffer requirements and enforce them. As part of the permit review process or the application for a tentative map, the applicant will be required to submit a farmland buffer design plan. So that's sort of what we've dubbed it. That farmland buffer design plan would include, if they are doing a vegetative barrier, a landscape plan. It's really, it's still at a conceptual phase at that point, so they're conceptually submitting what it is that they, how are they going to do their buffer? Are they going to have modified cultural practices? Where's the fence going to go? Are they going to put the vegetative barrier in so that they don't have to do the full 300 feet? Just so we can see where it is that they're going to be, where are they going to be placing their buffer? It would also include the basic design of the vegetative barrier if one is proposed with some of the, you know, the plant types and the spacing and that sort of thing. And then the proposal for modified farming cultural practices, if that's what they're proposing. This shows the process of review and approval for a buffer design plan submitted for discretionary permit. It allows basically a new sensitive non-farming use, so some of the ones that we had seen on that original list. Let's say it's a CUP for a new church or something that's out there and is close to farmland. The first step in this process is to submit a buffer design plan, which includes the items I just mentioned in the configuration of the buffer. The buffer design plan then becomes a condition of approval for the project, if it's a discretionary project. The next two steps occur prior to use inauguration or issuance of a permit for the new use. So step two, we would look at the vegetative barrier plan, which is the landscape plan for that with all the plant materials and types and spacing and that sort of thing. Step three, the modified cultural practices. So we look at all of that before we would approve the new use. The fourth step involves the actual installation of the vegetative barrier, which isn't required until just before final inspection if they're constructing a new building or structure or prior to issuance of an occupancy permit by the building department if it's a new use. Requiring installation any earlier is basically impractical where construction will be taking place on the property. We don't want them to put in a vegetative barrier and then they're doing construction with big bulldozers and that sort of thing that knocks the plants down. So that's why we set it up that way. And then the last step, step five, which requires permanent maintenance, that's really ongoing. The farmland buffer is required by the ordinance to be permanently maintained unless the farmland is converted to urban uses and the need for a buffer ceases. Enforcement would be handled through code enforcement on a complaint basis. Staff is working right now on administrative procedures for this and may rely on agricultural inspectors from the ag commissioner's office to be our eyes and ears out in the field because they're out there anyway inspecting for the proper distances for spraying for certain pesticides and that sort of thing. So we're working on what would really be our policy document to describe, you know, how this implementation would work. So recommended actions. The full wording is listed on page 15 of your staff report. But in summary, your commission is being requested to adopt a resolution recommending to the board of supervisors that the board make the findings, and there's several of them listed on page 15 of the staff report, that the board adopt the proposed coastal and noncoastal zoning ordinance amendments in Exhibits Two and Three and then as amended by Exhibit Eight, which I showed you, and that the board specify the clerk of the board and the planning commission clerk as custodians of the record of proceedings upon which these decisions are based. So that's staff's recommendation to you.
Questions of staff? Commissioner Malatar?
I understand that greenhouses would have to have buffers.
Greenhouses, we make a distinction between greenhouses that have venting that goes away from the sensitive non-farming land uses. And greenhouses themselves fall within that category that does require a buffer. So in other words, it falls within that category of crop and orchard production, greenhouses. So if you're planning a new sensitive use and you're next to a greenhouse, then you would require a buffer. But greenhouses are also those things which could be allowed within a buffer. So it's sort of that one exception that falls within two categories. And they're allowed within the buffer in the case where the venting is away from that sensitive non-farming use.
How about nurseries? Same as greenhouses?
Nurseries also require a buffer. So they also fall, because the way that, we basically fell back on APAC's definition for crop and orchard production and farmland. And nurseries, they don't look at nurseries any differently, even though they're putting their plants in pots and that sort of thing. They're still looked at the same as you would at a crop or orchard. So if someone was planning a sensitive non-farming land use next to a nursery, then they would require a buffer as well.
You said that front yard setbacks are exempt from the buffer area. And I'm assuming if you have a 300-foot buffer and the front yard setback is 20 feet, you could really go into the buffer 20 feet so you'd only have a 280-foot buffer.
Correct.
Okay, so that's... Is grass and/or weeds considered a vegetative barrier?
You know, the precise definition of a vegetative barrier is really something that's semi-porous that includes a combination of trees, shrubs. It could include grass. Basically, the idea is that the particles of the spray drift are caught by this vegetative barrier, which is composed of different things. And so there are a lot of studies that have been done that show, you know, what's the most effective vegetative barrier. And it's typically a combination of plant materials.
So grass alone would not qualify? Thank you. And another question on Page 33, there's a comment about enforcement. On the top, enforceability is a key component of, the first sentence. Enforceability is a key component of proposed ordinance amendment. The county has had trouble, both generically and specifically in planning and enforcing things. We talked about the $10,000 thing. Do we, does this ordinance have something written in how you're going to enforce this? In other words, I don't maintain my buffer or I don't have the proper buffer. Do we have to go through 25 steps before I'm fined or assessed? When you say enforceability, what are the mechanics of enforcement?
Right. Well, it basically is going to fall back on our existing noncoastal and coastal zoning ordinances and the way that enforcement is done through those. And I know they just made some changes to that to allow for the fining and that sort of thing to occur. But enforcement here, we haven't written in something that's special for farmland buffers in terms of how enforcement would be done. It really, it is going to be the standard enforcement as it's done with all other violations that one fines throughout the code.
However, one of the keys to enforceability is to make sure you've written down in your ordinance the responsibilities of all the parties and what is required, at least the framework. If you have that, then if you have an enforcement case and we go to the DA's office, they won't say, "Well, sorry, we can't enforce your ordinance because your ordinance was written poorly." Or those enforcement provisions are just simply not there. That's the context in which this is meant, is that it would at least allow the enforceability to occur. We're not trying to speak to the overall enforcement efforts of the county and its overall zoning enforcement.
Would enforcement be the responsibility of our section of the Planning Division that is in code enforcement? Would they be enforcing this too?
Yes.
And you only have one or two people, don't you?
We have three people. And as part of the planning director report, we just hired one yesterday, so now we have four. We have four. And, you know, and we could talk about this, the civil administrative penalties that the board passed also back in December, which is, you know, greatly going to strengthen the enforcement in the county. So, you know, we plan on this year in having a much greater effort on enforcement.
Thank you. And my last question was, have we received any additional public comments since we received our agenda?
No.
Thank you for a good presentation, Fisher.
Commissioner Dukas?
I had, I guess, a hypothetical question. In my mind, most of this, the purpose of this buffer is to protect the adjacent use from pesticide or farming operations. But reversing that, is there something in this ordinance talking about uses next to the farm that would impact the agriculture itself? For example, I think of, you know, the cement recycling operation or sewage treatment plant or some other thing that perhaps didn't have a high human activity, like houses or something, but a business that had the potential to adversely impact crop production. Is that in here as well?
Yes, it is. Those uses are also listed as the uses that would require a buffer. So for instance, mining, and I could actually go back to, perhaps go back, maybe not. Let's go back to that list of uses. It's towards the beginning here. I'm in it within the buffer. This is requiring a buffer. Here we go. So recycling facilities... So recycling facilities...
So landfills, sewage treatment plants, any kind of, what, okay.
Yeah, those are precisely the types of things that would require a buffer, and this is not an exhaustive list. What happens is...
That was my concern.
Yes. What happens is, we have these, like I said, these are sort of broad categories as well, and this isn't even all of the broad categories, but we have broad categories and there are a lot of subheadings that fall beneath those. So it hasn't just, we haven't just caught those uses that were high human intensity that were incompatible, but we've attempted to really catch all uses that are incompatible with the farmland. Because just as you stated, this is really, this is sort of a mutual thing. We're not only trying to protect the people that might be moving into the residence next to the farmland, but we're trying to promote the viability of agriculture long-term in the county.
Okay, that was my concern. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I have a question about a hypothetical also, but if I can ask Mr. Smith a question. You commented about referencing noncompliance or violation of this ordinance to the district attorney's office. Conceptually, what do you envision? Are you talking about a criminal issue or a civil action of some kind? Because generally speaking, their staffing problem is equally, if not more difficult, than planning staffing abilities in enforcement, so.
I was only using that as an example of the most egregious case that would go, civil penalties. We also, we use a progressive system, meaning we try to use whatever is effective at the lowest level possible. But in certain cases, you wind up with a property owner or an applicant operator who just simply, for whatever reason, is not persuaded by even fines. And then we're left with, if it's the most egregious case, and if the DA feels that it's an important case, and on occasion they do, they will take the case on to the courts. But before they do that, if it's not enforceable, they will simply say, "I'm sorry, we agree with you, but you haven't written your ordinances correctly." That was the illustrative point only.
In that situation, you decided, would that then require an amendment to the ordinance, review of the ordinance by county planning?
Amending the ordinance to involve...
To make it enforceable.
Oh, and, well, we think that we've put a lot of effort into ensuring that those provisions are in this ordinance. We would be very surprised if we were later told, "We don't think it's enforceable." There are other provisions of our zoning code, which we have been advised are pretty weakly worded, and really, if we want to, if we have to enforce through the courts, we probably need to go back and do an update of those sections. But unfortunately, given budgetary constraints, we do not have an active zoning, I mean, a zoning ordinance rewrite or updating function or program within our planning division at this time.
Okay. On the hypothetical, we mentioned a potential sewage plant or recycle plant next to ag, but one of your examples cited building development, housing development, and it mentioned a fence inclusive within the buffer. I'm a little confused about the fencing description. It seems to me that if you're putting in, requiring a fence as part of the buffer requirement, in particular with residential, that fence would be solid, solid structure fence to block, i.e. oversprays and those types of things, dust from impacting that residential area, noise included. But I don't see anything in describing the fence except chain link fencing. So would you help me out here?
There's actually, there's a very good reason why the fence isn't solid. The fence that we've included, the fencing description we've included here in the ordinance is, mirrors what they've got in their APAC ag-urban buffer policy. And the reason why the fence is not as solid is because when you've got pesticide spray drift, they've done all kinds of studies where they show if it hits a solid wall, it actually jumps over it. So while a solid wall might be very effective for dust and maybe for noise and that sort of thing, for the actual pesticide spray drift issue, it's not effective at all. So that's why they've done this chain link fence.
Okay. And is it the responsibility of the developer in this particular case to install that fencing?
Yes.
Again, the purpose of the fence is really to protect the agricultural land from vandalism and trespass.
And so it would be the developer who would be required to maintain it, or I assume?
Well, if there were an HOA that was involved, if the development had an HOA, let's say it's a tract subdivision, and then the buffer maybe is maintained by the HOA, then they would take care of it. Otherwise, you would be talking about individual property owners, because typically the developer sells those individually.
Sure, and that's my concern, because planned communities are present certainly, but not all developments plan community. And so I'm curious about the maintenance requirements and enforcement, once the developer sells out and it's left basically unmaintained.
There's certainly concerns over the vegetative buffer, if there is one proposed, in terms of long-term maintenance. In fact, we will require some assurance in terms of long-term maintenance of that landscaping. Typically with a chain link fence, other than occasional repair, that usually doesn't require maintenance per se. Now, certainly over 50 years, or maybe even, you know, a little less, fences have a way of deteriorating, but usually not to the point of dysfunctionality.
County council, if I could, go back to this page 33, the enforceability. What was outlined appeared to be a recordable document. And going back to the hypothetical with a land use that could then become owned by many individuals, is it envisioned that agreements or interactive kinds of relationships between those parties become recorded?
That's also, that's always a possibility, to increase the enforceability of these type of buffers, is to record a document holding the landowner or subsequent landowners responsible for the maintenance of whatever buffer there is, whether it be the fence, or whether it be the 150 barrier, the 300-foot barrier.
Okay, so essentially, what we're talking about doing is memorializing the relationships between those two properties, so that down the road, the planning division has entree, or the county has entree to take that on.
That is correct. And again, it's all dependent on how that lien is written, whether or not the beneficiary of that lien is the actual property owner, or is it going to be the county who's the beneficiary of this lien? These type of liens are very effective as far as giving notice to subsequent landowners, and that sometimes is enough so that they know that there is a requirement that needs to be met. But you're correct, it does give the county a lot of leeway about how it's going to enforce these particular elements without going to the civil penalty process or otherwise.
Okay. And then, we had this discussion relative to oil. For all of the relationships between ag and, within ag and urbanization, what percentage of those within the county area are hostile? Not talking about heavily reported, but are we talking about 1%? If you read the newspaper, it appears that every ag-urban interface is hostile. That is not my experience. So just from the professional side, how many relationships are we actually talking about here?
I personally couldn't comment on that. I don't have the...
Mr. Smith, I know you have the knowledge.
Well, using anecdotal information, currently, we have an application on file right now with Limonera to expand and update the farm worker housing complexes that appear on their property. That's a great case in terms of working out the issues of modified cultural practices in and around those units. In the community of Pirate, which we'll be coming back to you or your commission probably later this spring, there is in fact a design requirement for a buffer between the ag-urban interface that actually mirrors all the requirements we have here. Quite honestly, we do not have that many applications that come before us where buffering would be imposed, but not having a pulse on all the permits that go through the current planning section, relatively, I would guess that that would be a small percentage.
Okay.
Now, if your question is as to pre-existing situations, I don't have an indication of the complaint bases that happen. That'd probably be better answered by the complaints that usually go to the ag commissioner's office, not to us.
Any sense?
Well, there is a representative from the ag commissioner's office here today, if you'd like to pose that question to Ms. Rita Graham.
Okay, when we get to a public hearing, I would like to pose that question. One of my concerns relative to this, like what I'm hearing, but one of my concerns is we talk about this huge nebulous enforcement issue, and the issue is, most people figure out how to be neighbors over time, and this reflects that more than this other thing. So I want to make sure we're clear about what we're doing here. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. All right, this time I would open the public hearing. And I have no speaker cards, but I would certainly appreciate hearing from Ms. Graham.
Good morning, Commissioners Rita Graham. I'm going to clear my throat, excuse me. Should've brought water today. I'm the land use, agricultural land use planner for the agricultural commissioner's office. I've been in that office one year. The agricultural urban buffer policy, a policy document of the agricultural policy advisory committee for which I provide the staffing, was well underway when I arrived in that office. It was adopted by APAC in July of 2006. Since that time, my office has been making recommendations per that policy document when we have received a request for review of projects, discretionary projects from the planning department. So we do have some experience with that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, both as to actual cases or ideas that you might have for something that might be coming.
My specific question is, how many?
How many? Well, let's see. I have an APAC committee meeting that will take place on February 7th, and I just prepared a packet of materials for the APAC committee members. One of the items was a recap of projects that have come in for review. And I believe that there were seven or eight projects just since their last meeting in November. So we're getting lots of projects in for review, many of them from the cities. The policy document and the ordinance before you today do not apply to cities because the county does not have jurisdiction over cities. However, the cities are being very cooperative and are sending their cases to our office for review, both directly and through the general plan section of the county. And so let me give you some examples of some cases that have come. The city of Ventura is working on a comprehensive plan. They are working on what I would term an area plan for the Wells-Satacuy portion of the city of Ventura. Many of those properties that are going to become residential abut farmland either inside the city of Ventura or in the county jurisdiction. Where the city of Ventura residential development proposed will abut county agriculture, our office is recommending that the city impose a 300-foot setback or a 150-foot setback with the requisite vegetative barrier. We're sending those recommendations to the city. So far, there have been no projects that have been approved, so we don't know whether our recommendation will be adopted by the city. Another example on that side of town is the Hanson Trust Residential Development, which is near the corner of Satacuy Avenue and Telegraph. The project is in the county jurisdiction currently, however, it is in a city sphere of influence. It will abut property in the county jurisdiction that is farmland. There has been an attempt by the Hanson Trust owners and their consultants to enter into a modified farming practices agreement with the adjacent agricultural operator that has been unsuccessful. Because the city of Ventura will be the decision maker for the residential project, we do not know whether our recommendation that the full buffer of 300 feet or 150 feet with a vegetative barrier will be actually adopted by the city. But you can see that there is a lot of conversation going on intra-jurisdictional. The city of Fillmore has had some proposals. They have a water treatment plant, they also have a park. Our office has been asked to review those plans. And again, we are sending recommendations for the vegetative barrier. Our emphasis with APAC is human intensive uses. That is a little bit different than the ordinance that you're seeing today. Some of our recommendations have not included vegetative barriers for such things as sewer treatment plants. And Commissioner Dukas, his question that caught my attention when you asked about that, that is one difference between the current recommendations of the agricultural commissioner's office on behalf of APAC and APAC itself, and what you will be seeing and what we'll be seeing with the ordinance. There has been an emphasis on buffering for the benefit of human intensive uses, as well as for the benefit of agricultural operations with the APAC policy document. With the ordinance, there is going to be more of an emphasis on buffering on behalf of agriculture for the benefit of agriculture from uses that are not necessarily human intensive, but would have some other effect that would be detrimental to farming. So that, I believe that the ordinance proposal is stronger in that regard. And those are some of the examples that we're getting. I have more, but I'll stop there.
Any other question? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I have no other speaker cards. I would close the public hearing. This is a time for disclosure.
I have nothing to disclose.
None.
None?
None.
Chair would entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the recommended actions and adopt the resolution finding that the, do I have to read all this?
No.
Okay. What's listed, items one through seven on page 15 of the staff report, with the inclusion of exhibit eight.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Discussion.
I'm really pleased that the supervisors directed the planning department to address this issue, and I'm pleased with the amount of time and effort the planning department has put onto this. It's, I think, a very important ordinance, and I certainly support it.
Commissioner Dukas? Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez, any comment?
The only comment I would make is...
Microphone.
The only comment I would make is, as an aside to potential issues related to this ordinance, much like state fishing games make grant funds available to the district attorney's office for pursuit of issues of prosecution and those types of cases, I would be curious to know if an effort's going to be made by planning or the county and ag to maybe identify if there might be some sort of state funding available for grants, partial grants to allow ag or county to pursue those issues that are egregious in violation of the ordinances. It's just, again, just a comment, just a thought. I don't know if funds exist, but it'd be interesting to inquire into it.
So you want us to inquire if there are grant funds available to enforce these buffer ordinances? Should they, should somebody not comply with the provision?
Well, I'm just envisioning, and I guess I'm doing, taking the devil's advocate approach here in some egregious situation. This refers to the DA's office, and it doesn't register on the rectory scale for an ability to enforce whether there might still, obviously, we would have a situation that we feel needs to be enforced, how we'd go about doing that.
How about we do a return to the planning commission in 12 months and let you know how the program is working?
That would work.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, if I may just tag on to the...
Also, if I may just tag on to that, one of the tasks that Tricia Meyer is going to be working on is actually putting together the operator's manual internal to the planning division. And so a lot more detail goes into those sorts of how-to documents. And again, one that's, once that's completed, we certainly can share that with your commission and let you look at some of the details of the nuts and bolts.
So that would in essence become your training manual for enforcement efforts in that type of issue in-house?
For the permit processing and the assurances, obviously, we'd love to have compliance short of going, having to go...
Sure, absolutely.
But there may be, for instance, there may be bonds required for ongoing maintenance, in which case we would then cash those in and ensure that the maintenance occurs.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, a twelve-year, or twelve-month review would be informational, I think, for the board here.
Very good, we'll make sure that gets back to you.
Just a couple of comments. I love ordinances that are put in positive case language. It's been a long time coming, and it's now become consistent within all of the language of what we're hearing here, because it tends to force enforcement, because you have things which will occur, if they're not occurring, that's very simple to see, as opposed to a prescriptive. It's a huge shift, and enforcement then becomes also positive case. This is where we want to go. And I know this has been going on for a long time, and I appreciate Ms. Graham being a part of this. The last time we had this little go-around, it was mostly negative case, and ag was in the room saying, "Don't do this to us." And I don't see ag in the room, which means ag got to participate. So this is a good thing. Ms. Adukas?
Just thank you very much for an excellent presentation, very easy to follow, and the clarity of purpose is something that is excellent.
Any other discussion? Call a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Discussion, report by the planning director.
I do have a few items to go over. First of all, just the director's report on the past board actions. The O'Brien subdivision that came before you, that your commission approved on eleven nine, that went to the board, actually went to the board twice, and on December the twelfth, the board approved the O'Brien subdivision for a two-lot subdivision, not a three-lot subdivision. So that was the compromise that the board reached on that parcel map, fifty-four fifteen. The symbol administrative penalties that your commission approved on eleven nine, passed on a four-zero vote, the first reading in November, the second reading in December. Everybody is very excited about that. It came into effect in January. We hired a staff person, Franca Rosengrin. She started yesterday, she's from the building and safety department, so already well-versed and well-trained, and has a code enforcement background, so she is going to be a huge, tremendous help to the enforcement. On a sad note, on retirements, Todd Coller, who heads that section and was mainly responsible for doing the wonderful job on that ordinance, is retiring. He has four days left, and so he is madly, he was here, I know, till nine o'clock last night, trying to work out all of the procedures, all of the forms, all of the policies that go along with enforcing an ordinance like that, and getting that in place for his staff and Franca to all review in his absence. Todd's been with us for thirty-five years, it's absolutely devastating to the planning department, I'm not sure how we're going to get along without him, but we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there. We're going to have a retirement party for him, it's going to be on March the first at the Pacific Corinthians Yacht Club, so I'll make sure that you all get an invitation to that, I'm sure he would love it if you could join us on that. Carl Morehouse has retired, I'm not sure if you're all aware of that, but Carl has retired on December thirty-first, I think. He retired to concentrate his efforts to be the mayor of Ventura. So Carl was with us over twenty years, and he was in Bruce's section in the general plan, and so he is also very much going to be missed. So that is what I have to report, the good news and the bad news.
Commissioners, Commissioner Rodriguez? Commissioner Moltar?
I just have a request. I don't know how easy it would be to do this, but is there any way that you could, by email or somewhere, survey the other counties to determine what stipends they pay to commissioners, to planning commissioners? We're currently at fifty dollars, and I think it's been that way, I don't know how long. But you know, we're not in this job for the money by any means. But I'm just curious to see how we rank with other counties on compensation.
Sure, that won't be a problem, I'm sure we can come up with that number by our next, by the next time that we meet.
Wonderful.
Maybe not the next time we meet, I think we're meeting again in a couple of weeks, but if we have a March meeting, we should be able to come up with that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
At our next meeting, I would really like to have proclamation for the former planning director, and to have us have his presence. He came up through the chairs, so it would be nice to recognize that. And then, the other question I have is, where are we in terms of some of the big projects, the mines? Is there a formal application yet for Tolon? And what's happening with Simi Valley landfill?
We don't have any formal applications to date, although we're expecting one from Simi Valley, I would say in March, we're expecting one. Both Chris Stevens, in his capacity as the RMA director, and myself toured the site last week, I think, and so we have, we got a complete tour of that. I understand Supervisor Foyle is going out for a complete tour, so they are getting their applications and their packets, everything ready, and that is going to be, I'm sure, imminent for submittal. The mines are interesting. What has happened on the mines is that we had a firm that we retained, and they were not expecting in their contract or in their scope of work, the amount of public comments that we received back. I'm pretty sure it's over eight hundred comments. So in order to do that, they have asked each individual operator for additional funds. It's somewhere in the, between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars each additional that they're asking for. So obviously, that project, that has to be worked out with them. We only have one, as far as I know today, that has agreed to pay. There was conversations going on yesterday with both Envicom, the environmental consultant, and the other two firms to see how we are going to proceed. And county councilman and I have a meeting this afternoon to kind of go over that, but so they are, you know, it's in the draft stage, it's in the response to comment stage, we're trying to find funds to do the response to comment. So I don't imagine that that would be before you until sometime in the spring or the summer.
Okay. Mr. Chair, following up on that, are we going to be involved? When you're speaking of mines, are you speaking about, what I'm reading in the paper about the movement of trucks from Santa Barbara County all the way through the Ojai Valley and that big controversy, are we going to be involved in that at all?
The mines that Commissioner Val Charles was speaking about were the Grimes Canyon, the three mines that the county is processing EIR and EIR for, for those particular situations. We are involved in the mining operations that are on the border in Santa Barbara County, and there are negotiations and discussions going on between Ventura County and Santa Barbara County, and Marty Robinson's from the CEO's office is going to Santa Barbara tomorrow to discuss that. And those are just to make sure that both of our counties' interests have been met regarding truck traffic and how that traffic would go through Ojai or go through Santa Barbara County. And so we are trying to come to some negotiations on that as far as placards go, you know. If we could, if we limited truck trips to just the three operations that are in front of us, what's preventing the five other ones that we haven't limited to, you know, using up the truck trips? So, you know, we're trying to come up with a placard system or enforcement system that said, you know, those are Santa Barbara trucks, and you could not come through Ojai between the hours of six-thirty and eight-thirty, and there you are with your red flags, so we know it's you. So we're trying to come to those, because there's really no sense to put those on one mine unless you get them on all of them that are in front of us right now. So those are the discussions that are being had between Ventura and Santa Barbara County. And those are up in Lockwood Valley, those mines.
Thank you.
Couple of issues that come to mind, Commissioner Rodriguez brought it up. There are many layers, especially with mining operations, trucking enforcement, and it has been a long time, but it would be nice to have an update on DOT, highway patrol, enforcement issues within the county. And also with oil, the oil industry, there was some discussion about why haven't we done this? I think part of the political history that's important is to say, the last time we went to the board, it was, oil has been very, very good to Ventura County. We've had a huge change in operators in that, what, ten, eleven years? And so perhaps another overview of oil, because there's a huge resurgence, oxy is going nuts, certainly in the National Forest, to bring stuff back online. The other question I have is, the question keeps coming back to enforcement, legal overview, and perhaps from county council's office, some overview about shifts, because I think there's been a very subtle but big shift in looking at the zoning ordinance as enforceable versus just having it be words on paper that we put applicants through, and then once the CUPs delivered, we're done. And perhaps just an overview of what is the catch now for renewing CUPs, because the number of never sunsetting CUPs in this county has gone down significantly. And just to have that sort of overview for the commission. There's nothing else?
I have one question, something that just occurred to me for the director. I got a complaint routed to me via email, complaining about home construction stopped on Hollywood Beach. It was moving along and suddenly, suddenly it stopped because of environmental issues and impact on the coast. I don't have the details with me, and I apologize for not having them with me, I completely forgot about it. But I'd like to route that issue to you, if I may, and see if we can get some explanation so I can get back to Supervisor Flynn's office who routed it to me, if that's at all possible. Can I do that?
Oh, sure, yeah, you can send it to me directly, and I'll have it looked in. A single-family home on Hollywood Beach?
No, yes, on Hollywood Beach, on Ocean.
On Ocean Drive?
Yes, the construction going, as you know, crazy for the last, for a number of years, and this has never become an issue, and suddenly it's an issue, and I'm curious to know if there's been a change.
It's an issue because somebody said that we've stopped the construction of one single-family home, or just the issue of the build-out of the beach is an issue?
In this particular case, it's just the individual residence.
Yeah, I'm not aware of an individual residence that we've stopped, but that might be a building and safety issue, but if you send me the address, they're very easily looked into.
Sure.
Most of the time that we would stop somebody at the beach, it happens on these legal non-conforming uses, and they try to really maintain their setbacks. You know, some have a five-yard front yard setback, and they have this fifty percent of the rule or fifty percent of the roof, you can't, you can't take down more than fifty percent of the floor or roof and still maintain those setbacks. If you do that, you need to actually maintain all setbacks, side yard and front yard. So a lot of the time what happens at the beach is they say they're going to maintain those, and then when we go out to do the first inspection, the whole roof is off. So that makes them then conform to the setbacks, that could be the situation, but I'll look into that particular...
You've touched on a pet peeve of mine, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
And we probably don't have time this morning to go into it, maybe we can talk about it separately.
Sure. But if you send me the address, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? At the commission, I would like to adjourn in honor of Commissioner Adukas and her chairmanship for this last year, and with the commission's permission.
I concur.
We're adjourned.